A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In the letter to the Commissioners dated June 26, 2025, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, July 1, 2025, at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county. And Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women and our first responders. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Malner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven?
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. We'll start off with approval of the minutes of previous meeting. County Board meeting minutes from 7/17/2025.
6/17.
Or 6/17, I'm sorry.
Not there yet.
So can I get them motioned?
So moved.
I'll support.
Any discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody pose? Motion passed. We need approval of the agenda.
Move that we accept the agenda as presented with the correction, with the addition of item 10, and that would be for FOIA appeal number 25-109.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody pose? Motion passed. Presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded.
Motion to place and file?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody pose? Motion passed. Number eight, reports of standing in the statutory and special committees and others. Public comment on the agenda items. We have Rory Mattson.
Yeah, I just want to comment on the Drain Commissioner that you'll be discussing again tonight. Pretty lengthy discussion at the last board meeting, so I guess that was good. Couple of things that were said, though. Remember, I had brought up that Don Shirley, because I was here then, got 11,000. It was 9,000 salary, 2,000 mileage. And then Don came in and asked to go to 2,000 salary, 9,000 mileage, and that's how he ended up with the $50 for the one meeting that he had to attend with the county commissioners every year. It looks like there might be a proposal tonight for 3,000 in salary, but unlimited expenses, which was basically brought up by Christine at the last meeting, which includes travel and mileage, which makes a lot of sense. I don't know why you'd ever approve an unlimited amount of travel and mileage. I think you guys even have to come and ask that you're going to be out of the county or whatever it is. There was also some things brought up. Mandatory meetings. There is, if you pull up that law, I did, 100, what is it, 515 pages? I'm sure some other people looked at it. Thank God it's in little highlights, you don't have to read every word. But there's only one that they have to attend, and that's your update meeting that you have to go. And then there was talk about, I know Christine brought it up, and Ashley did too, that there's this monthly meeting in Lansing. I know quite a few Drain Commissioners because of my position before with soil erosion in lower Michigan. And they do get together, but it's not mandatory. And today, you could do Zoom, so you don't have to go down all the way to Lansing every single month for a meeting. And if it's trainings, because even though he's only been here two years, he's still new, that's fine too, but some of that you can get online. So that reduces mileage. There was also a few comments on he was working every day. I tried to figure that out, and that type, soil erosion, he doesn't do that, he doesn't, there's a lot of other things that are covered. He has no control over county, road commission, right of ways, MDOT right of ways. He has nothing to do with any of that. So I'm trying to figure out, there must be people calling him constantly, and sometimes he just show up because they have a water issue, but there really is nothing that that Drain Commissioner is going to do in this county that isn't covered by others. And then the levying taxes thing, he doesn't have more power than the governor, and he does have to have petitions if he's going to put in a drainage district. So the things that a normal Drain Commissioner does, who's going to work every day, they have drainage districts which have to be put in, then they have county drains within those. And then they do levy taxes and things like that, and they review development plans, which I talked about. So if there's a plat, new subdivision in Delta County, he has to sign on to that. He is one of the members. But remember, as he signs on, you guys take the liability on the financial end if whatever he signed on to, along with ever else, doesn't work. So there's other things that he could do, but in Delta County, I don't see that being anything. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Baron?
Thank you, Board. We've got a couple of items on your agenda, the one being the Drain Commissioner. It's a token job in Delta County. There are, it's got a couple statutes, plats and what have you, but there's no drainage districts, and the $50 is more than adequate for what the job is, because it's not much of a job. And then the, what is this being pushed for? My concern is, is this going to be used as a standing point to come after people's property rights? A grab? Because that seems to be the direction this Board is taking here lately. The other item is UpCap, the resolution, the annual, what do you call it, implementation plan for services to yield. I sat on that board. I got fired from it for trying to ask a question on this particular thing here. And as Commissioner Johnson can attest to, the UpCap, if they continue with the plan they had when I was there, which I suspect they are, it's in direct violation of the President Trump's executive order on this nationwide. This is a CRT, DEI, woke, queer alphabet soup promoting plan, as your administrator knows full well, because she was part of the Director of Operations to make sure it was implemented the last couple of years. This is, basically what it is is, what is it? Merit, excellence in intelligence are to be avoided at all cost. And to discriminate against people based on their gender and sex is to be implemented at full force, especially if you're white. And I don't know what white is, but that's, they've got that figured out. I would strongly recommend you tell them no, and get Mead, the CEO, at here, which was supposed to come here a couple of years ago, to explain this. But he told us to pound sand. Because he picks who puts, who he puts on his board, as Commissioner Johnson knows. He was told, I had to be fired, I was fired, and he picked out who on the board is going to be here. Now, he works for the UpCap Board, but apparently, he doesn't. He's king there. Bring him here and have, question him on this. Get a copy of their plan and read it. It's disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on the agenda items?
We have a remote public comment.
Seeing none?
We have a remote public comment.
Yeah.
Hi, this is Joseph Prudhoe. I'm calling about my FOIA appeal. Chairperson and Commissioners, thank you for hearing my appeal tonight regarding FOIA request 25109. Only briefly able to over Ms. Wickman's email response to you before tonight's meeting. Log. All clear requests for all signed affidavits from witnesses, any written or recorded sworn statement. And those given to law enforcement or the court. Statements using. Preparation or evidence presentation. This is a straightforward request under the Michigan FOIA. I have five hundred points of why I believe the denial is improper. The record is proven to exist. The police report itself repeatedly references body worn camera recordings, phone extraction data, and GVR video files that were recorded, downloaded, forward to the prosecutor's office. It also references a signed sworn search warrant affidavit used to seize digital evidence. All these public records under MCL 1522, paragraph I, they were possessed, used, retained by the prosecutor's office, its official duties. Possession is enough. FOIA does not care whether the prosecutor personally relied on the videos. If the office possessed or received the DWC footage, phone extractions, or GVR files, they must be disclosed, or the office must produce a proper certificate that they do not exist. And retention is a sworn statement. A signed search warrant affidavit is by definition a sworn statement. It's used to justify the seizure of evidence later given to the prosecutor. Claiming it's not a statement or not retained does not exempt different FOIA. If they were reviewed or if they had it, if possessed it. Or you have parts of the record or exempt, the court addresses the non-exempt parts much produced under 15.244, subsection 1. A blanket does not exist response violates this. Number five. So section 5, paragraph B requires a signed certificate if record does not exist. The prosecutors arguing KVPA means no certificate is needed, but their notice did not say specifically which parts do not exist with the clarity FOIA expects. They mix partial denials with general statements. Default that if they deny part of the request because their record does not exist, they must clearly certify that. The KVPA defense is stretched here because the parts denied and did not clearly comply with the statute certification provision. Tonight, I respectfully ask the Board to reverse the denial and pardon Director Prosecutor's Office to produce a search warrant affidavit.
Any other public comment on the agenda items? Seeing none? We will move on to committee reports, administrative report.
Thank you. I want to start by first publicly thanking the Commission for entrusting me with the position. And I've been at the position now for a little over a week, hit the ground running, trying to meet with department heads, and get up to date on county business. I also want to thank former Administrator, now Airport Manager, Ashley Young, for allowing me her time to assist with the transition. She's been very helpful. I also want to thank the county employees for their patience and dedication in enduring another leadership transition, and I look forward to working with the Board and the county employees in the future. OSHA certifications, Buildings and Grounds Director Cory Schroeder advised me that all of his department has now received an OSHA 30 certification, and he's working on obtaining more. Most likely, he'll wait until the winter months when they have more free time in order to get those certifications. But he is proud of his staff that they all are going to get these OSHA certifications now. There is a drug court graduation scheduled for Monday, July 21, at 5:00 in the Circuit Court Room. I believe you all received an invitation as well. Judge Parks will be presiding over that in Circuit Court. There is an Eagle Renewables Ready Community Award that I was given information on this week. I'm going to be looking at that RFP. It's a rolling grant, so the timeframe, there's not a timeframe, it's just when the money is dispersed, the money is dispersed. It looks as though the county is eligible for funds for this. The purpose of the RFP is to incentivize utility scale renewable energy products permitted through the local processes. So I'll be taking a look at that and then updating the Board on that progress. The fiscal year '24 audit, Airport Manager Young has been kind of finishing up where she was at with the audit. I've been looped in with Anderson Tacman regarding that, and any documents that they were waiting for, I believe, were looking good to wrap up the last audit for that. So I will be updating the Board on that as well. And lastly, it's not in my written report, but right before the meeting, I was given notice from Cory that Shaniers, John and Nick both donated the beautiful flowers that you'll see in front of the service center and around the jail. They had contacted us this year, and it wasn't something we put in the budget, but graciously, they just donate them to us, so they're beautiful. So I just want to give them a thank you.
Move to place on file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody pose? Motion passed. Number two, Finance Committee, minutes of 6:20, 25.
We had a Finance Committee on 6:20, 25. The two items, the first one we'll discuss in, actually, the first item is going to be number three on your agenda under new business, and that is a letter of agreement with probate court. And then the second item that we actually discussed is going to be coming up here right after that for the Drain Commissioner. So thank you, Commissioner Williams, for your time with those.
Move to place on file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody pose? Motion passed. Department head updates. Is there any department head updates? Seeing none? We'll move on to unfinished business. Number one, Drain Commissioner requesting increase of annual salary. Would like to start it off.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll go back to our finance notes here. So we actually had several conversations with our Drain Commissioner, and that was one of those where he did say it's not, you know, a mandatory meeting every month. And then he thought that the 6,000 was a little high initially. So I do think it is a good idea, just like us, if we're going to travel outside the county, you know, you make a statement that you're going to do that. We're actually at that point where, at the end of this month, it's the end of the third quarter. And so, based on that, and trying to come up with something that was trackable, and if you look on other ones, they are, we're one of the outliers on the bottom end as well. And I'm not looking at the far end, like some of the counties in southeastern or southwestern lower Michigan, those are, those are more than what everybody here makes put together. So one of the things was, after that conversation, was it to be a salary of 3,000, and that would cover the remainder of the year, up to 4,200 for travel and lodging. So there's also, you're going to see in there dues and registration, which is 900. And then the other one, which actually falls under the Park and Recreation Public Act, is for the Drain Commissioner to be present at those, just like the Chair of the Road Commission, for example, are also supposed to be there. So there's allowances in that total amount for that compensation. I think that's currently what we have, is that for all employees currently? If they're traveling outside the county, have to ask prior. This is, you know, that's one thing they could ask with their supervisors. For us, you know, that's one that we have to bring up as well. The other thing in that travel and lodging portion is, just like this Board, there's two conferences that could be attended to annually. By our discussion, he said he usually doesn't go to the one in lower Michigan, just because of what he saw on there doesn't tend to apply, where the one that's in the suit that will be coming up this fall is actually pertinent to what he's been doing.
I will make the motion that we designate the annual salary of $3,000 with no benefits, up to $4,200 for traveling and lodging, $900 for dues and registrations, $240 for park commission per diem to be prorated and financially supported by the interest revenue that is over the budgeted amount as recommended by finance.
Support.
Discussion.
Well, sure. I appreciate the work you guys did, looking into other counties and the prices or the costs of doing business. I would like to ask, how did we come up with 3,000? Was it more, like, did you guys look at more of an hourly rate as far as, like, previous? Because he's been in for two and a half years. Are we building more and more? Is he going to start getting paid less and less hourly because of the hours that are going to be put in? Like, where are we at as far as that goes?
So one of the things in the course of the conversation, that you can kind of almost look at it more seasonal. So, you know, during your normal construction months, obviously, you're going to increase and as you get later in the fall, obviously, your timeline decreases. Based on the conversation during even his peak months, if you look at the average, it comes out to like $2 an hour, somewhere in there, 250, somewhere in there. So it's not, again, that's why it's a salary versus hourly. I mean, if it was hourly, you know, that's like, you know, anybody up here, if it was hourly, it would be pretty substantial. So I did fine with what he had talked about in there, and it's, and some of those are correct. You don't have to necessarily go to every single thing. There's times, I will tell you, even in my previous position, you're going to get a letter in from Eagle that says X project's going on here. Is that one of those that you follow up? In my previous job, no, but that would be one of those for him to, to at least put eyes on. So, and you're right with the stuff with projects with the Road Commissioner, MDOT, like you said, you know, it's not where he controls those folks. But it is, it is one of those that, it's a name and face kind of deal with, with the individuals that are leading that project. So it's not where, you know, you're going out there every day, all day long, but there is, there is that human contact between those, even on those projects.
Sure. And then, I mean, if anybody else wants to jump in too. All right. And then the $4,200, that's, that's not the goal to hit that, that's just allowed.
Correct.
That's the allowable.
Yeah. So when we looked at it, we took what our max range that we utilize is, and then if for some reason, both conferences were down that far, which we know they're not, but that was the range. And then we looked at the distance that he would have to attend the Parker Recreation meeting, and then, what was the third one? I'm trying to blank out, do you remember off the top of your head?
Well, the 4,200 is the, it's the in-county travel. So there's, there's just expenses related to in-county travel. The 240 is Parks and Rec Commission, so that includes the travel to and from Parks and Rec.
Correct.
Yeah.
Question on that, then, because it says the 42 is for travel and lodging, but we're not doing lodging in Delta County?
No.
No, not, no, that would be, if that was.
Okay. I just wanted to make, just wanted the clarification, I was hoping that.
And that was, when we figured those numbers out, based on the max distance that we also use, and what reimbursement currently is for mileage for those two conferences, and I think we used a $300 a day on rooms for conferences.
I forget what, Ashley was the one who recommended that number, and I don't recall exactly what it, what it was.
It had to do with what the conference fees are and with rooms.
We did look up the conference fees and then the potential hotel cost.
Yeah.
Did you guys, I noticed in, when reading 105 pages, or I think it's 107 pages, there was something about doing office hours, like, once a week? Did the Finance Committee address the office hours once a week?
No. He, when we were talking with him, he said he works right now, and his average is 12 to 16 hours per week.
Okay.
And he does that from his home, just like all of us do. We don't have offices.
Okay.
You know.
Well, and the reason I ask is, I was, I think it's 280.27 in MCL, and it says we need to supply an office for him, and it has to have his hours painted on the door, and he has to have one week, or one day a week that he's there. So are we, so we're okay with him working from home? Are we going to paint the hours on his door?
No.
Okay. So are we?
Just like a lot of the MCLs, there's, they were written back in a time when there wasn't the internet, and, you know, there's flexibility in, I mean, you could look up the MCLs for a lot of positions and find caveats that don't make sense. It's just the way that it is. They don't change them.
We could post his information inside the planning and zoning window.
Sure, sure.
You know what I mean, to, for anybody who might want it, but it could also be available online.
And it should be online now, so.
His number is online, his name, number, and position. He did request, you know, in previous conversations we've had at this Board, you know, identification for his truck, or for his vehicle, whatever it is, and then business cards, you know, so that he can hand those out when he's on site. Right now, he has nothing to hand out.
So if it's like the magnetic placard on the side of vehicle, that kind of thing, ID card, which, you know, we now have the machine to start to do it. I don't know which, which, I would have talked to Brandy again. I do know there's departments that do have the ability to generate an ID card. It's not like, you know, you're wearing, you know, official.
Yeah, he just asked for identification, so, yeah, some form of, yeah, some sort of identification.
Is he going to be filling out sheets like we do for mileage?
Yes.
Yes.
So we know where he's been and.
Do you want to speak into your microphone so people can hear you, John?
Yeah, yes.
And that was part of the other thing, since that hasn't been tracked, and that's where that number is, we're literally making an estimate. And then, once we start to see, like, the sheets, whether it's a digital one like we do, or it's one of those that's on paper like we used to do, for him to submit monthly, I think as we move forward, especially next quarter with the budget stuff, that will actually give our administrators some additional data that's right there in black and white and hard copy to be able to make whatever adjustments might need to be made.
Yeah. I think also the report, the annual report will too.
Sure. And then, I wish our Drain Commissioner was here so I could ask him some questions as well, but.
He's, he's actually in a, I asked him to be here, and he's in a procedure right now. So he can't be here physically.
Yeah, yeah. Best of luck to him. But perhaps you guys know the answer. The, do you know where this program, or this Drain Commissioner position, we're expanding it, obviously, if we're going from $50 to $3,000. Do we know where this is headed? And he has three and a half more years to fulfill the term. So did he indicate the direction that he would like to see this position go to?
The only thing that I would say that he has wanted, he has asked to do that hasn't been done is to add a GIS layer for the Delta County mapping, so that there's a GIS layer of drains and, you know, storm drains and, you know, all that stuff. It's the things related to drains. So he's asked for that, and UpCap is looking to see if there's grants available to provide that.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, like, every once in a while, as Commissioner, we'll get a phone call, like, hey, I'm getting a flood over here, is there any way you can provide relief and get that cleared? And then we refer him to the Road Commission, and the Road Commission might say, hey, that's not our job, that's, that was a subdivision that was put in improperly.
That's the Drain Commissioner's job.
So the Drain Commissioner, but as of right now, the Drain Commissioner really doesn't have funds available to say, oh, yeah, I'm going to, I'll help dig that ditch or clear out that garbage that's in the way. So I was curious to see how he's planning on raising revenue for that.
I don't know.
Yeah, there, there is nothing right now for that. I do know, based on the conversation, there's three individuals he is working with, and that's one of those that is within that roadway area, and the discussion between him and the Road Commission is where that lies. So is that one that, you know, may have to be facilitated, you know, between the groups? Is it, is it within that portion of the road? What would make it not the Road Commission's responsibility, I guess?
Sure.
So where they've done that down the other roads, you know, is it a private road? Does that make that, you know, is that what the difference would be? I don't know in this case, but that is one of them. One of the other ones is, in general, the, it's kind of like, like, you mentioned, you know, we'll get phone calls, we have an issue. He said he's, he's actually started to get an increase in phone calls. I don't know if that's because it's on the website, more people are looking at the website. if that's because it's on the website, more people are looking at the website. Is it one of those that's, you know, asking a question versus always having a problem? That, that I don't have your answer to.
I'd say we're in the news more, so.
What side? I'm sorry.
We're in the news more, so of course we're going to.
Yeah, that could very well be.
It's good.
Well, I can say that there is one individual I know of who didn't know who to contact, and then once they listened to the meeting, they were like, oh, this is a drain commissioner issue on my property. And so they, and it was a flooding issue on their property, and so they contacted the drain commissioner to deal with that. And he had shared that, you know, clearly this conversation is making it more highlighted. So I think more people are understanding that this position is out there and, and what this position can provide to the community.
Perfect. Well, I appreciate this commission's willingness to negotiate and kind of compromise. I always like getting a deal. So when I see a price tag, I like to always get it a little lower, and I appreciate you guys working with me on this.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number two, appointment to Central UP Materials Management Planning Committee, one opening. And we do have one person there. I saw the application here.
I know, I've seen it. Oh, there it is. It's in new business.
It's in, I think it's in old business, isn't it?
It's listed in old business.
I'm sorry.
The actual application.
Make a motion to appoint Todd Kengas.
Sorry.
As presented.
I'll support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Let's move on to payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. We have a total report of claims of $1,440,892.35.
Move to pay our bills?
Support.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
And Jensen.
Yes.
And Melner.
Yes.
Okay, our bills are paid. Move on to number two, resolution UP, Area Agency of Age and UP AAA 2026 Annual.
You'll see attached to your board packet here, this is the annual implementation plan that UpCap puts out. This is part of, and a continuation of, the multi-year plan from fiscal year '23 to '26. This plan is how they plan to spend their aging dollars. So it's for individuals aged 60 and older across the UP. UpCap usually presents that plan to the board and just looks for a resolution of support to continue that on to MDHHS for final approval.
Okay. Motion, move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It needs to be a roll call because it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Okay.
Johnson.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
And Melner.
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Number three, LOA Probate Court Juvenile Division caseworker.
There was some movement in Probate Court, and you'll see actually on Agenda Item Four, it's a follow-up to this as well. There was a letter of agreement between the Probate Court Union and the county regarding a change in the job description of the juvenile diversion caseworker. They have extra duties that are now aligned to them, and so the judge was looking to increase the hours of that position from 40 to 45. And so there was a letter of agreement that was signed between the judge and the union, and now it's to the board for approval.
Any good motion?
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify too, so when we met with Judge Lon over this proposal that he had with the individuals moving and not refilling that one position, even with the additional hours, we actually end up saving money.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number four, M. Hughes Transfer Request to Fill Probation Officer's Position.
And this is exactly what Commissioner Jensen was just referring to. There was some movement due to Tammy Watun's retirement. So Jason Dix is now slotted in that position, and then Matt Hughes was promoted into Jason's position. So this is just a letter stating the movement within their office. And you'll just take note of the implementation started last week, so Monday, June of 23rd. So we're just looking for board approval of that.
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number five, resolution slash request for support of.
Redesignation?
Yes. I can't get it. Although, re-designation, there it is, of US Bicycle Route 10 and the Iron Bell Trail.
I'd move that we issued a letter of support for the change from the US Bike Route 10 to be renamed for the Iron Bell Trail.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call, it's a resolution.
Roll call, resolution, sorry.
Okay, Johnson.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
And Melner.
Yes.
Okay, number six, appointment of Emily DeSalvo, effective 6/23/25. If you want to do all this in one, it would be Delta County Central Dispatch Authority, Superior Trade Zone, Second Alternate, Superior Watershed Partnership Liaison, Premonumentation Grant Administrator, MM RMA County, County's Membership Representative, and the last one, FOIA Coordinator.
I did have one question on that. So our previous administrator was, asked me if I would do the EDA and the Delta Hannibal Task Force. And so, do we want to have both I and our administrator go, or do we want to just designated me with our administrator as a sub, or do we want to have vice versa where our administrator goes and I'm a sub? What's the board's preference on that?
And which one was that for?
Uh, that's for the EDA.
It's not on here.
It's not on here.
Okay.
And the Hannibal Delta Task Force.
I think, what, did she ask that because she could not keep up with the meetings?
Yeah. And it was, I previously served on those as well, so I kind of knew.
I think that should be a conversation between you and Mr. Salvo.
Okay, as long as the board's comfortable with that still.
Yeah. What, would, would you prefer administrator?
In the past, I mean, I went to those meetings and kind of, you know, with Commissioner Johnson, if he couldn't make it, I would go, we would, but I, I leave the, the board's discretion. It doesn't matter either way to me.
Sometimes we'd both show up too, and it was helpful, but I just want to make sure the board is comfortable with that. Okay.
So we can just keep it as it is?
Yeah.
We're good?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move to make the appointment of Emily DeSalvo, effective 6/23/2025, to Delta County Central Dispatch Authority, Superior Trade Zone, Second Alternate, Superior Watershed Partnership Liaison, Premonumentation Grant Administrator, MM RMA County Member Representative, and our FOIA Coordinator.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number seven, assignment to Planning Commissioner, one commissioner. At our last meeting, or was it two meetings ago, we elected to just put one commissioner on. And at this time, I did make some phone calls, and the person I would like to, I mean, they're both doing a tremendous drive on this. The person I really would put on this, and that's only because he has Wells Township, which he sponsors, and the other commissioner doesn't have any townships that are in the zoning. So, but they also said that if they could, each, each commissioner would still stay on until they can find a replacement from the Township Association also. So I would suggest having that on there, and Commissioner Jensen, Commissioner Kelly on there until they find somebody from the Township Association.
Motion to ratify the board's decision.
Support.
Or the chair's decision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just for note, I am on the subcommittee for the master plan, so that'll be you now. Okay.
Okay. Motion passed. Number eight, dump trailer.
I did ask to put this on the agenda just because I wanted to clear up a prior motion that was made. So you'll see in your agenda packet from a board meeting on December 19th of 2023, there was a motion made by Commissioner View, seconded by Commissioner Peterson, to direct the administrator to research and follow whatever the finance committee recommends. And then you'll also see the subsequent finance committee minutes after that. And so the information that was referenced in the finance committee is now incorrect. So I put this motion on here because it was never acted upon, and so I'm just looking for the motion to be rescinded so we can clear it out, and then, and then basically correct the, the motion from before.
I just, I have a point of order real quick for Nancy. To rescind a motion, because I'm trying to remember my Robert's Rules, to rescind a motion, do the folks who are rescinding the motion, do they have to be, is there some percentage that have to be the previous, the, on the board that actually passed the motion? That's the only thing that I can, and I did not, I apologize for not looking it up ahead of the meeting. I was doing other things and I forgot. But I, I, I remember something in the back of my mind about rescinding a motion and having some percentage of the body still being the body that actually originally passed the motion. So I just want to verify that.
Then it's easy, because those same members then could actually still do that.
Right. I just wanted to verify that real quick.
And then with that correction of that motion here, would we also have to listen there to have the previous minutes corrected? Because then they wouldn't, they wouldn't match, or is it just this one will show the correction in that one?
Just this one?
Yeah.
While she's looking that up, I think it's important to add some context here that the motion was to sell the dump trailer for $2,000, and that was the county's portion of this $2,000. The, the dump trailer has been sold to Mr. Mattson, and Mr. Mattson paid $5,000 for that dump trailer at this point. $1,000 was paid to the parks. So there is, of the 2,000, there is 1,000 that has been paid back to the county. Just so that we're clear, the rest was paid to the district.
What was the total paid to the district?
4,000. And that actually, it technically is the 2,000 that Mr. Mattson put in originally, that, that 2,000, and then 2,000 to buy out the, the district's portion. So that's 4,000. And then the county would be 1,000. There was 1,000 paid to the county. On June, I believe it was June, June of 2022, Mr. Mattson paid, deposited into the Conservation District $2,000. And in the journal entry for that, it says that 1,000 of it is earmarked to the parks and 1,000 of it was earmarked to the county, I mean, to the district. And that was June of 2022.
And did we receive that 1,000 from the district?
It's, it went into the parks.
Okay.
So it went into the finances related to the parks, which I would consider the county.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So.
So technically, the, Mr. Mattson owes the county $1,000, depending on what we decide to do. But that's, that would be the full 6,000 for that dump trailer.
Commissioner Miller, you may be able to help. Was there not a previous motion by the board to be done with the trailer?
Can't.
Previously?
There was supposed to be at one time, but I don't ever remember seeing that.
The only, from all the meetings that I went back into, I only saw where they said they wanted to sell it, but then it was, or to, you know, how does it say here?
Anywhere you, second.
Yeah, they wanted to sell it, but then the, but, well, it wasn't, it was in the original owner's name. It has never been in the county or the district's name. So it was still in Luke Riley's name. Luke Riley has only been the owner of that trailer ever. So it, we couldn't technically sell it because we didn't have title to it. But the Conservation District did get surety bond and get, did get title and was able to negotiate through, I think a settle, it was part of the settlement, the lawsuit settlement. And then they settled on the, the final sale of, of that, of that dump trailer at that point.
Are you fine, Nancy?
I haven't found anything on membership, but I did find that when no notice of the motion to rescind or amend something previously adopted has been given, the motion may be as follows. So I move to rescind a motion relating to adopted at the May meeting or amend the motion by inserting. Without previous notice, the motion requires a two-thirds vote or a majority of the entire membership for its adoption.
Okay.
So not of the previous. So that's, that's good. We can, we can, we can rescind.
So, Emily, can you reiterate what your recommendation is?
So my recommendation is to rescind the current motion that's out there because the county never acted on the motion. So as of right now, it's that the county would need to act on that motion. But the motion itself, from the finance committee at that time, now the information has changed, so it's incorrect. So my recommendation is to rescind that motion. And then it's the board's discretion what to do after that. But at this point, my recommendation would be just to relinquish all rights to the dump truck. Or the trailer, dump trailer.
Is there a way we can have the Conservation District or a representative from the Conservation District kind of corroborate what we've been told?
Sure.
Just because, I mean, if that's up to the Conservation District representative, he's willing to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Mattson, when he, when he came to the meeting to talk about buying the dump trailer, he had already sold himself the dump trailer through the Conservation District. And, and at that point, the county already had $1,000 given to them, and, and the district already had $1,000 given to them. So that $2,000 had already been deposited. So it was very odd that then there was this conversation about selling it to, to Mr. Mattson. And then at some point, it became, I'll buy it for $6,000. So there was a lot of back and forth that was going on, and it, it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense. But at this point, and Mr. Mattson can come up and, and just, or verify this, at this point, Mr. Mattson has paid $5,000 for that dump trailer, and $1,000 has gone back to the county.
Okay.
So that's.
So actually, we should take the action on rescinding the previous motion first?
Yeah.
And then that will open this up for, for debate on the second part, so...
Are we rescinding the motion from, that's in the Finance Meeting Minutes or from the County Board?
I think we...
It would be the County Board, the motion on December 19th of 2023.
The number 16 dump trailer?
Correct.
It's in our agenda packet. I'll make the motion to rescind.
And I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass.
I'm gonna make a motion that we relinquish, relinquish all rights to the dump trailer.
I'll support. Now, could I call up?
Yes.
Can we, just, so we, I mean, I see we have both representatives here, it'd be great to hear from both sides.
Mr. Kaplan?
If he's willing.
Would you like to know?
So, did that sound about right?
Yeah, it's about right. The most complex part of it is there was a motion made by the Conservation District in 2022, I don't know if it was June or August, to sell a bunch of equipment, including quote unquote, "an old dump trailer nobody uses." That motion went through, Rory deposited personal check for 2,000, 1,000 was allocated to the parks, and 1,000 was allocated to the district. Later on, when the board turned over, we were informed by a former employee that Mr. Mattson had a co-owned dump, dump trailer, partnership trailer, presumably on his property. Looking into the records, sure enough, this was something that happened in 2015. It was always in the possession of the district. The district had full control over all the books for the parks and the district. So, they didn't need to come back to this commission to get permission to buy and sell equipment.
Okay.
So, it's important when we made an issue, the district board made an issue, that we still have this co-owned dump trailer. That's when Mr. Mattson came to this commission and said it was 2,000, 2,000, and 2,000, and offered to pay the district 2,000 and the county commission 2,000. But once we found out what the records were and that previous sale that had been undisclosed to the, to the county or really the district, it wasn't an old dump trailer nobody uses. It was a partnership trailer. It was still in the original owner's name. They floated, we floated the title, the original title was lost. So, we ended up mediating it out during the lawsuit, Mr. Mattson versus the Conservation District for breach of contract, including this, this liability account and the, the $50,000 bonus for remaining on through the end of 2023 to do the transition of the parks. And at the very last minute, he brought it up. We, we negotiated $3,000 with the understanding we would communicate that to the county, which we did. I did through Chair Melner and also Ashley Young, and then waited for the response from the commission of what they wanted to do. There was no response, so that's where we have it today. But if you look at the books, and we had a court case, there was a lawsuit, there's six hours of the testimony, I have all the transcripts, all the evidence. My opinion on it is that the district originally put in 4,000, the county put in 2,000, and the county was reimbursed 1,000. So, that leaves an outstanding balance to the county of $1,000. But that would be between you and Mr. Mattson.
The, you mentioned the, there's $1,000 that you reached out to the county with our chair and our administrator, and we haven't reached back to the Conservation District? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, John, I mean, this, this was a, this was a long time ago. I think, I mean, I believe that given the, the low amount of value, I don't, I think Ashley explained to me, it didn't, you know, it was up to the discretion of Mr. Melner. I should also add that this entire dump trailer incident and other equipment is under investigation by the Attorney General's Office. So, I, I don't know how you want to handle that, but, you know, this is the civil side of things. So, you're, it's, it balls in your court.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else?
No, you go ahead.
All right. And then, Mr. Mattson, can we have him corroborate also?
Well, I obviously won't corroborate any of that. Okay. We bought that trailer in 15, 2,000, 2,000, and 2,000. And I stated that here, I stated that over the past, how many years it's been, 10? Nothing's changed, okay? The original 2,000 came out of Delta County Parks when the Conservation District had it. For, that's 2,000, the county share. There were three partners. And I know, Pat, you were on, and John could have been on, I can't remember your exact...
2015 I was on.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, we came in front of here and asked the county if they wanted to be that chair, we could take it out of the parks. It was approved here. And so, 2,000 came out of there, 2,000 was put for the Conservation District. The board of the Conservation District has discretion to issue funds on how they issue funds. I know Joe and Christine have never agreed with this. And basically, I had incentive pay coming. So, they said, "We will pay that $2,000." There was a document created that I brought to that district thing. I only brought two there. And I should have brought a lot more. If we would have ended up in Circuit Court, I would have had eight board members, a CPA, and an auditor there that said that original 2,000 that the Conservation District put in on behalf of, for me, was real, and that's how they did it. And they had the right to do it. So, they can investigate it for 100 years if they want. So, the bottom part came to, there was two, two, and two. So, I already had two in it, I was a third owner. Then in 2022, because we knew there was going to be a change in '23, and we're gonna make, make it, because the district had already come to the county and said that they weren't going to continue after '22, and we thought that was going to be the end of it. So, I wrote a check right after that for another 2,000 that they are talking about. And when I, I was obviously doing the books, I knew the county had 1,000 coming, the district had 1,000 coming. I separated it. So, there was 4,000 of my money into it. And then, we went into '23, and we were basically, I think, I don't know if you were on then, John, I can't remember all these years. But I think, Pat, you might have been gone, but we sent the county a letter, the district, when I say we, sent the county a letter basically saying that we were going to give up the parks. And then because there was nobody to take it over, we kept, we moved it to March, we moved it to May, we moved it, we just kept doing it. And finally, we agreed to hang in there until December 31st of 2023, because I think then the county took it over in '24. So, when I paid that amount, the extra 2,000, second 2,000 in September, I didn't do anything because I thought we were going to be done. And of course, I talked to my board then, that we would be done in December 31st, or very shortly after that. And then I was going to pay the other two. So, still, regardless if I had two-thirds in it or whatever, I still viewed it as it's a three-way partnership, the whole thing hasn't been paid off yet. So, then we went a year, and we got into, basically headed for Circuit Court. And we had a mediator come down, and we tried to do something earlier. The current, the current chair at that time was Nate Brockman. He met me out on a piece of property, we talked about it, and he said, "This is an embarrassment throughout the state for the county, the district, and you." I said, "Yeah." I said, "I can't seem to resolve it. I'm willing to pay the six." And I've always said I'm willing to pay the six. So, two plus two plus two equals six. Nobody could ever change that. And they tried to spin this thing by saying, "Well, isn't what it meant?" Well, that's what it meant to me. So, the bottom line came to, when we were in the mediation, Stupak brought it up again, he was my attorney. And we had a mediator there. And he said, "Let's handle this right now, because otherwise, we're going to be back in Circuit Court over a stupid trailer for a couple thousand dollars." I said, "Yes." And, and so, basically there, I said, "I'm still willing to pay the six total." Maybe I should have used a little bit better wording. So, at that time, as far as I was concerned, I had $4,000 out of my pocket. That leaves two more. But through that negotiation with Mr. Brockman, I said, "I'll do this. I'll be, and it can be proven through the mediation." I said, "I will throw in another $1,000 just to get this done." So, as Christine says, I have five, there's no doubt I have seven. Just bringing in past board members and showing checks and everything else. So, through that mediation, and this can be verified through my attorney, the mediator, and take me and Joe and Glenn Vandywater right out of it, and their two attorneys. Because I'm guessing the mediator went over and talked to them, right? And then talked with them, and then they came back. So, I said, "I will pay $2,000 to the district." They got their two, don't ever have to hear about it again. But I want to write a check to Delta County for the $1,000 that I still believe they owe. Not that I wanted to give it to the county, I'll be honest. I wanted to replace it in the parks. Because that was people's money, campers who come and stay in those parks. I wanted them to be whole, and that was 2,000 bucks. So, before that, and you can ask Ashley Young, before we were during the mediation, I came and told her, and she'll corroborate this, that, "Remember, you're still owed $1,000." But I talked to Nate Brockman, and I'm willing to just pay it. So, I'm going to come to a board meeting and give you that 1,000. But through this mediation that was brought across the hall, I, that's how it was first approached. 2,000 to the district, Rory was writing a check, 1,000 to the county, it's 1,000 more out of my pocket, but it's done, because this is ridiculous. I almost said something bad there, sorry. This is ridiculous, it keeps going on and on. It's like the never-ending trailer saga over a used trailer that we bought for 6,000. It came back that that wasn't acceptable. What was acceptable from the mediator, which I, I hesitated to do it, was that I will write a check to the Delta Conservation District for 3,000, which I did. I think it was this next day or two days later, even before anything was signed. But the district was going to, and that was the words that came back to, from us, the district was then going to get ahold of the county, and it was my interpretation and Frank Stupak's that that 1,000 was going to come from them to this county to be replaced in those parks to the people. And that's the bottom line. That simple, that quick. So, there's 7,000 out of my pocket, and I think the Conservation District owes Delta County Parks $1,000. So, you can see the rub. But I know there's 7,000 out of mine. Two was paid for me by the Delta Conservation District Board, and I paid, what, the other five? Check for 2,000, which was given the county 1,000, and then one for three. No ifs, ands, or buts about it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You said that when the decision was made to purchase the trailer three ways, that you brought it before the board?
Commission, yes. I brought everything before this board.
Do you remember when that was?
Must have been 15.
Okay, because I just went, I just went through all the board agendas from 2015, and it's not on there. So, I'm just wondering which meeting, do you know, was it spring, summer?
Nope.
There's, there's not...
Everything we did though, but I think Commissioner Johnson could collaborate that because I know he was on, and Melner. We came here and said exactly what we were doing and what we were going to do. Now, whether you're looking for a motion, I don't know, but that would be the commissioners' right? But we had control of those funds, correct?
No, I'm saying I don't even see it on the agenda.
I don't think it was.
Oh, I don't think it was on the agenda.
Okay.
I gave a report every single meeting, and John knows this, and so does Pat, to this board. And if we were going to do that and take that out, and it was going to become a third owner of basically the county, right? Because the parks is not an entity, we made sure we came here.
So, it was just a separate motion that was never part of it?
I don't, I don't know if it was a motion. I gave a report, you know how you have, I want to see divisions, but what do you have with the department?
You said you brought it before this commission.
Correct.
At a meeting.
Correct.
So, which meeting was it?
I don't know, Kelly, that was 10 years ago.
Well, I know, but we have everything in our next cloud for meeting minutes that date back to like 2011, so I'd like to look it up.
All I did was come out here...
Spring, summer, fall? What do you think?
I can't tell you.
Well, then I don't know what to tell you either.
Okay. But the bottom line was, I came here and said what we were going to buy.
Wait, just a minute. Nancy's saying it there, where is it?
I remember typing it. Well, I don't, I don't have access, I don't have internet on this laptop.
Spring, summer, fall?
I don't know, but 10 years ago.
Nobody knows.
We'll have to, we'll have to, just like we search for other things, we have to search through it.
But there was definitely a report to this board about it was going to be a three-way split. And if this board wasn't okay with it, then I probably would have did it with the Conservation District.
Well, I just have questions because there was never, the, the county was never titled on it.
No.
No.
Correct. It was, I think Christine knows about this, I believe there's something in the minutes about having it titled with the Conservation District only. That was from my board.
That's correct.
Okay. But when we went to do that, the problem we ran into was now you have, and we didn't know, we tried to do the best we could so three entities could use it, and I really didn't need it at the time, but I was going to do it so things could get done, as cheap as we could. So, we damn near got a brand-new trailer for 6,000. And the point was, when we went to title it, that's where I found out, I don't believe anybody here knew, anybody in my board knew, and I sure didn't, that we couldn't title it with two governmental units and a private citizen. And that was the problem right there. We never knew it.
Was that brought back to the board?
Yes.
For notification?
Yeah, well, we came back and said...
And they just said, "Well, whatever."
Yeah, basically, continue. You have the trailer, it's a three-way split, we all knew it, and away we went. And it worked fine. So, there's nothing more really to say on that, that's what it was.
Well, I mean, technically, we can't ask the Conservation District for money, we can't ask you for money because we never owned the trailer. We, it was never titled or registered in our name, you know, as the county, like, there's nothing that we can do about it. So, you helped the county enter into a deal that they were going to lose money on. Because there was no way that we were going to ever own that trailer.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, then, if you want to put it that way.
Well, no, I'm just...
You had $1,000 into a trailer at the end, right? How many years did you use it? And the majority of the use was in the parks. Right? So, I'm being honest, yeah.
Okay.
And there's other, so, for, so for $1,000, do you know how many, how much you would have paid in contractor fees?
Right, so it's, so it's a...
So, you didn't lose money. You know, don't use those words.
Okay. Well, we never got it titled, it was never ours.
And it wasn't in my name either.
No, it was in somebody named Luke Riley.
Correct. The person who, the person who had it, and we were waiting to figure out probably when somebody bought it.
For 10 years.
It's been 10 years now, this was, what, when we tried to do this, '22?
So, we had no, so you came to the board, so what you're saying is you came to the board...
On behalf of the Conservation District.
On behalf of the Conservation District. You entered into an agreement to, to purchase this trailer three ways with 2,000, 2,000, 2,000, that never got board approval. Because that's what we're saying, right? It never got board approval.
It was, it was purchased by the Conservation District.
With county funds.
So, that will be in the Conservation District meetings. Right.
I'm totally...
All I asked for on behalf of the board, we were going to move 2,000 out of Delta County Parks, and was that acceptable? And this board said yes.
I would like...
Not this board.
Okay?
I would like to just ask, I would like to ask just a verification of the mediation that occurred, if Mr. Kaplan was able to come up and just, because you have said that the mediation was a specific, took place in a specific way. And I would like verification on that, since it was obviously mediation is two sides of a coin.
Correct.
So, I, I would just like to have that mediation verified.
If he's willing. I always say if he's willing, because the public can always say, "No, I'm, I'm not an elected official, I'm going to sit here."
The purpose of the mediation was to settle a breach of contract dispute. At the very end, Mr. Mattson's side added that they wanted to include the dump trailer because the case had already been, the district had already been sued in small claims court, and it was dismissed. And there is, under oath, there's judgments from that, there's opinions from the judge, there's lots of testimonies, there's evidence, there's facts. The mediation basically was a settlement that said Mr. Mattson would pay $3,000 for the dump trailer, and we would inform the county of, of that. And then it was up to the county to negotiate what the next steps were. But that settled the issue for the district.
Thank you.
But in that mediation, and Joe can state, what went over there was I was writing the checks, 2,000 to the district, 1,000 to the county.
No, he's saying no.
Well, then that's interesting, because we will have Frank Stupak, we will have the mediator, and I remember who he is, and we also will have the two attorneys for the district. And we also will have the two attorneys for the district. Yeah, it was settled that because they would get with you, I wrote the check to the district. That is true. But that wasn't what was there. And I probably shouldn't have did it because I see how it ended up.
On the floor?
Yep. There is a motion on the floor.
Want to dismiss your speaker? Thank you, Rory. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Can you read the motion right now?
Let me get back to that. I was trying to, I do have Internet, so I was trying to search the minutes.
I think it was resend. That one went through.
That one went through. This is to relinquish all rights to the dump trailer as recommended by our administrator.
And I support it.
Okay. All in favor?
Oh, I thought she was going to read the motion.
Yep, so it was moved by Commissioner Van Genhoven and seconded by Commissioner Jensen to relinquish all rights to the dump trailer.
Which technically we never even had in the first place.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
FOIA appeal number twenty-five dash one oh, one two oh. Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess I'll just start with, does anybody have any questions from our memo?
Not on this particular one, no.
Okay.
From me. So I would make a motion that we uphold the denial based on the requestor asking the prosecutor's office to create a new record.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Oppose.
Motion pass.
Okay, number ten. FOIA appeal twenty-five dash one oh nine.
I'm going to make a motion that we file a ten-day extension to collect for the data.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
I'd like to offer a supplemental motion that we instruct our administrator to contact MMRMA for their legal advice regarding FOIA twenty, FOIA appeal twenty-five dash one zero nine, contacting their FOIA specialists.
Good support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you. Number twelve, general public comment. General public comment.
I want to thank the commission for coming up what I think is a very realistic thing for the drain commissioner. He's got a salary, which I was never against, but it was just the idea of, you know, charging extraordinary funds or putting in county drains where they're not necessary. So I think what was done tonight is good for you guys and good for him. The other thing, I've heard Kelly and Christine both talk about this. And after the last board meeting, I hope it can happen. I think you have more control over this room now. And I know Kelly wanted a little bit more out there for the public so they could get it. And I know at the Recreation Commission, I asked for that we meet now over at the-
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Things. And the same thing, the Planning Commission meets in here. But it's not recorded like this board meeting. So if it, both of them, well, Planning Commission's already here, but if the Rec Commission can come back here, could they be recorded? So if you can't attend those meetings, you can still watch them. So that's still my request, and it sounded like both of you were kind of in favor of that before. I don't know if you really are, but if you are, there's two of you and there's five. So you need to just talk one more person into it. And I know there's probably an expense, but it would sure be very transparent then that everybody can watch those meetings. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Bob Behr. Announced me the first time, so this time I'll just announce myself, I guess. Anyway, the, this Friday is the Fourth of July celebration of the Declaration of Independence. And the heart of that is, in the Declaration of Independence, is in the first paragraph, part of the second. I'll read those. "When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth a separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to separation, through the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights governments are instituted among them, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form." All right, this is, the Declaration of Independence is the cornerstone of our constitution. Every one of these members on this board took an oath of office to this Declaration of Independence, the Constitution. Unfortunately, quite often, it's ignored. And because that tells you what your job is. When it says in here, "unalienable rights," those rights are from God. When it says that, it says, "The separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them," it's God's law. And in James, chapter one, chapter four, in the last part of verse four, it says, "Whosoever therefore will be a friend of the world is the enemy of God." As public officials who've taken the oath of office, you are to be, you are not to be a friend of the world. You are to be the, you are to be a friend of God. You are to do what's called righteous, and that is to adhere to the, to the will and statutes of God. And the, this whole situation here with this trailer, it's been dragged on. This was basically done, was supposed to be done when I was on the board. It got dragged out. It was used as a, sort of a, part of a rallying piece to help the, the people take over the Soil Conservation District and using nefarious charges on Rory Mattson. My time's almost up. But the parks agreement was started with a gentleman's agreement in 2010 by this commission. And a phenomenal job was done, but it's been hated by the people that wanted to take over those positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more general public comment? Any more general public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to thirteen commissioner comments.
I'll kick it off, sure. So happy Fourth of July, happy Independence Day. It's kind of the one day that no matter how far apart we might be, that we actually can agree that we're proud to be Americans. And I like to believe that we still might fight for a better America, and we might have different ways to do it, but at least we are happy to be Americans, and we want to see things improve. So happy Independence Day, and I'm looking forward to moving forward.
Commissioner Williams?
I just have one comment about, there was a guide that was published in the Daily Press, and it came out this weekend. It's called the Summer Outdoor Community and Menu Guide. It looks like this. I just want folks to know, I've contacted the press, and they told me that they got the information from a document that the chamber put together. So I did contact the chamber, and they are going to correct this information moving forward, but we can't correct it at this point. So it'll be right for next year. But on page twenty-one, it actually refers to Fuller Park as Fuller County Park, which we don't have a Fuller County. So that was, that needs to be corrected. But more importantly, it says a park entrance fee is required. And we do not have an entrance fee to any of our parks. And so this is something that I just hope that the, you know, the public knows we do not have entrance fees to our parks, so folks can go and use Obie Fuller Park. That particular section was about beaches, and it talks about Obie Fuller's Park's beach. And so anybody out there listening, you can use the beach with no fee associated with it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, the next round for RFP applications are open as of today for the opioid task force funds. We did have a short turnaround with the initial grant fund dispersment, and now we're going to be moving on to our first full year of dispersment on funds. I sit on that task force with Commissioner Williams, and we've made some updates and changes to a few things. So look for the press release, and the RFP will be coming out on our website. I would also like to congratulate Barbara Bellinger on her new appointment to WFIE fourteen news in Evansville, Indiana. It is an NBC outlet. Great job, Barbara. We're going to miss you. You know, Barbara's been a pretty semi-permanent fixture here at the county commission meetings over the last few years, and we appreciate all of her reporting that she's done on behalf of our community, not just on behalf of this commission, but on the community as a whole. She's been a great asset, and we'll definitely miss her. And happy Fourth of July, everybody.
Commissioner Jensen?
So a couple of things, as I promised as we move forward, getting closer to the fair, there's actually still many things that are going. So for those that previously remember, if you had to duck into the Ruth Butler Building because it's raining, you're probably getting rained on inside the building as much as outside. That has been fixed. There's a new membrane, membrane roof that's been recently put on. So if we do have the inclement weather on the fairgrounds, and you duck inside the Butler Building, you will not get wet now. Which is also a good thing for our vendors, but there's also a lot of other events that take place throughout the year that utilize that facility. There's a whole bunch of different new electrical poles that have been put up and new LED lighting and a lot of the other little areas that were a little darker. So for those that are going in the evening, they should have, with it being a little brighter, should have a much more enjoyable fare. One of the other items that has, we've been working through is in the event of whether it's a man-made or a natural disaster, or if somebody's had too much sun and passes out. To try to refine the policy as we move forward, to be able to create a safe atmosphere for everybody that's going, but in the event of something unfortunate would happen, that we have a means to be able to respond, to be able to respond quickly and efficiently. There'll be one more that will be coming up in that, and that will be our culmination of everything. We recently just had one that identified, basically working through all the communications. So for those that have done any of those kind of things, they know the two things that can always go bad is communication and logistics. So those are items that were definitely put out there. Also, I had the opportunity here last week, we did a lot of hiking with several of the members from the Delta County Non-Motorized Trail Group. We looked through several areas and tried to identify the best area. And then to come up with a rough estimate, and when I say rough estimate, it's really rough. But how to be able to get the bike trail from where it is on the Escanaba River Bridge, across railroad tracks, and to be able to come out on P Road. So not only is that beneficial, obviously, for those in the park, but for families or anybody that wants to be able to continue on. We know how hazard that is, trying to go underneath that bi-duck by, like where the grainy grape and stuff is. This would help alleviate that. It's well-known out there for like the tour-type bikes to try to stay away from this area because of that hazard, and that's something we want to be able to remove. It is another one of those, it's another step in our economic development. And Commissioner Johnson hit the nail on the head. It doesn't matter what your political ideology is, on the Fourth of July, we are Americans. I've been fortunate for many, many years of my adult life to serve with a whole lot of amazing folks in there. And just the ability that we have even at this level, and as you see further on in government, we won't always agree. Sometimes we're going to disagree. But that's one advantage we have over almost every other country in the world. We have that ability. We really do live in the greatest country in the world. And so I look forward to continuing to move forward. I hope everybody has a safe Independence Day and has a safe long weekend, and happy birthday, America.
Nancy?
Just happy Fourth of July, and thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
Administrator DeSalvo?
Just to everybody have a safe Fourth of July weekend, and for our county employees that can enjoy it, and for our first responders that are going to be working, unfortunately, that they have a safe weekend as well.
And for myself, last week I was down in Detroit at a MAC meeting, which is the Michigan Association of Counties. And they have, I believe, six committees that meet once a month, except on, yeah, during June, July, and August, I don't think they meet. But they have the, let's see here, the legislative update, and we approved all six of, or five of the committees at that meeting down in Detroit. It was very, very productive. And then we had our regular board meeting, and that was really productive also. But all the committees that everybody sits on, from lower Michigan to the U.P., we approved all their language. So that's a good thing. Other than that, have a great Fourth of July, and we have a meeting schedule. Regular board meeting on seven fifteen, twenty-five to five fifteen. Another in August, eight-five, five fifteen, and eight-nineteen, five fifteen. Thirty-day notice of appointment, opioid task force and planning commission. We're looking for members on both.
Yep, and the planning commission has to be a member of the Delta Township Association.
Correct.
Yep.
And let's see here, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed.